Two seconds, let the camera come up. Brian, tell him to wait and let the camera...
So at this meeting here, the agenda meeting...
The recording starts.
They'll still be here. That probably means I'll be pulling my hair out by then. They'll still be here, my visitors will still be here.
We're going to reconvene the meeting this evening, the organizational meeting of the City of Oxford Board of Commissioners. And with that, we'll start with administering the oath of office to our elected officials who were successful in running for office here in 2021, by starting with the mayor-elect, Mayor Jackie Sarjay. He's hungry.
You called him out.
Start to say if you're downstairs eating or something.
You know the Bible. And have it the left hand of the Bible and the right hand of the...
Yes, ma'am. If you will repeat after me and insert your name. I,
Jacqueline Van De Hoorn Serjean,
do solemnly affirm,
do solemnly affirm,
that I will support and maintain,
that I will support and maintain,
the Constitution,
the Constitution,
and laws of the United States.
and laws of the United States.
and the Constitution.
and the Constitution.
and laws of North Carolina.
and laws of North Carolina.
not inconsistent therewith.
not inconsistent therewith.
and that I will,
and that I will,
faithfully,
faithfully,
discharge the duties of my office,
discharge the duties of my office,
as mayor for the city of Oxford, North Carolina.
as mayor for the city of Oxford, North Carolina.
so help me God.
so help me God.
Congratulations.
And I failed to introduce my faithful and stalwart companion through all of this, Pathe Olivier Serjean, that I showed him.
Now you see why I'm so in love with him?
I like his role so well.
Um, we're swearing on Quan, so I'm mayor if you want to call Quan next. Okay. And at this time, we are administering the oath of office to S. Quan Bridges, Commissioner-elect. And administering the oath is former Judge Carolyn J. Thompson.
And this is my wife Paula.
Seth, can't down and write up and please repeat after me. And insert your name. I,
Quan Bridges.
S. Quan.
S. Quan Bridges.
do solemnly affirm,
do solemnly affirm,
that I will support,
that I will support,
and maintain,
and maintain,
the Constitution,
the Constitution,
and laws of the United States.
and laws of the United States.
and the Constitution.
and the Constitution.
and laws of North Carolina.
and laws of North Carolina.
not inconsistent therewith.
not inconsistent therewith.
and that I will faithfully,
and that I will faithfully,
discharge,
discharge,
the duties of my office,
the duties of my office,
as city commissioner for the city of Oxford, North Carolina.
as city commissioner of the city of Oxford, North Carolina.
so help me God.
so help me God.
Congratulations.
Come on, Judge.
It's so hot here.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, at this time, we will call forward Commissioner-elect Patricia T. Fields. And she is also going to be sworn in by, uh, former Judge Carolyn J. Thompson.
And I got a tribe, come on, tribe. I'm a grandma, so I gotta try. And my pastor has called in my Bible.
Do you want to...
Go, Paula.
You're fine.
We try to hide anyway.
Left hand down and right hand up, please. Please repeat after me and insert your name. I,
I, Patricia T. Fields,
do solemnly affirm,
do solemnly affirm,
that I will support,
that I will support,
and maintain the Constitution,
and maintain the Constitution,
and laws of the United States.
and laws of the United States.
and the Constitution.
and the Constitution.
and laws of North Carolina.
and laws of North Carolina.
not inconsistent therewith.
not inconsistent therewith.
and that I will faithfully,
and that I will faithfully,
discharge the duties,
discharge the duties,
of my office,
of my office,
as city commissioner,
as city commissioner,
for the city of Oxford, North Carolina.
for the city of Oxford, North Carolina.
so help me God.
so help me God. No, sit down, try.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Do what?
I guess we'll do it like this. I'll have you slide up. You're gonna go here. And now you're gonna slide up. I like my seat right there. Okay, momentous occasion, at this time, we will call forward Brian Kahn and his tribe.
All right.
And administering the oath of office will be our city clerk Cynthia Bowen.
All right, so real quick, this is my wife Ashley Kahn. In our three little minions, we have Rhett Cruz, Lila Grace, and Jackson Lee, as you know, my wingman. All right.
Repeat after me and insert your name. I,
Brian Kahn.
do solemnly affirm that I will support and maintain,
that I solemnly affirm that I will support and maintain,
the Constitution and laws,
the Constitution and laws,
of the United States,
of the United States.
and the Constitution and laws,
and the Constitution and laws,
of North Carolina,
of North Carolina.
not inconsistent therewith.
not inconsistent therewith.
and that I will faithfully,
and that I will faithfully,
discharge the duties,
discharge the duties,
of my office,
of my office,
as city commissioner,
as city commissioner,
for the city of Oxford,
for the city of Oxford,
North Carolina,
North Carolina,
so help me God.
so help me God.
You're right.
Thank you.
You did a perfect job.
Yes, you have served well. You may depart. It is a school night after all.
They've been awesome.
The Attorney of Pumpkins shortly arrived around eight-thirty, so you guys all went out.
I just want to see...
All right, you can watch.
This is what he's... There you go, this is what he's signing. So she's gonna sign, yeah, she already signed, and there your guy signs there. We do two copies. Is that okay? Okay, bravo, and your seat, I think, is down there. Oh, we got a, Teresa, can you flip up his...
No.
My proxy, my proxy.
Okay. Give the wingman and his sibs a round of applause. And with that, uh, we will call forward B. Seth Lumpkins, Commissioner-elect to be sworn in with former Judge Daniel F. Finch, uh, doing him the honors.
Seth Lumpkins comes from families who have made public service a legacy in their families. And I'm honored and proud to be here tonight to participate in the continuation of that legacy. We're proud of himself and his family. Now.
This, this is my wife Mallory. Our daughter Owen, she's about a year and a half, she can't be here because she, her bedtime is at seven.
All right, which one is this? Left, left hand about, raise your right, I see it. Say aye and repeat your name.
Aye, Seth Lumpkins.
Do solemnly affirm,
do solemnly affirm,
that I will support and maintain,
that I will support and maintain,
the Constitution and laws,
the Constitution and laws,
of the United States.
of the United States.
and the Constitution and laws,
and the Constitution and laws,
of North Carolina.
of North Carolina.
not inconsistent therewith.
not inconsistent therewith.
and I will faithfully discharge the duties,
and I will faithfully discharge the duties,
of my office,
of my office,
as city commissioner,
as city commissioner,
of the city of Oxford, North Carolina.
for the city of Oxford, North Carolina.
so help me God.
so help me God.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Wow, he signed up, I'm telling y'all, but my cousin. His office was a little town down east. And he went to the preacher for it, and since the preacher was supportive. They got through talking, and the preacher said, "Will you take a drink?" My cousin said it out of question or invitation.
If there is any doubt, our own Judge Finch is one of the reasons Oxford is such an extraordinary community. Populated, full of wonderful people. New, young, committed public servants, we are fortunate beyond measure, and I thank you, I thank Judge Thompson, and I thank all of my colleagues here, uh, and welcome and congratulations, Commissioner Kahn and Commissioner Lumpkins. And, uh, with that, we go forward to item B on our, uh, agenda, which is to elect the mayor pro tempore. And so with that, excuse me? I do not want to. Do you have a, one moment while we confer? Do you have a notepad?
What was that?
We, we left our ballots, so we're making new ones. I've got them right here. Take two and pass them down. Take two, pass them down.
You want two each?
Yes. Should be enough, are there not enough? Okay, we'll get more.
Yeah, you need to.
You got two more.
We got two.
You got two.
I got two.
Yeah, we got two.
I thought, I thought we were short.
I just can't count.
And we may not need these, but with that, so, uh, it is tradition to elect a new mayor pro tempore for the board to do that. Uh, when there is a new election, so it is usually four term of two years. And, uh, the mayor pro tem stands in the mayor's stud if needed, when and if needed, and so with that, uh, are there any nominations?
I nominate Pat Fields.
Okay, we have a nomination of Pat Fields, are there any other nominations? If there are no other nominations, we don't need our ballots. So I would last call any other nominations. Then I declare the nominations closed, and Commissioner Bullock has made the nomi, the motion to nominate Pat Fields as mayor pro tem, is there any discussion? All in favor, signal so by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, like sign? And there you have it, congratulations. I think we have our first female mayor pro tem in the city of Oxford, is your child still there? Okay, well...
Too late.
Nothing like... There you go, absolutely, so I think we will go, we'll do the administering the oath of office
with me.
all at the same time.
Same time.
So at this time, we will consider appointment or reappointment of our city clerk Cynthia Bowen. What is the pleasure of the board?
Motion.
That motion came from, was that, that was concomitant from our new mayor pro tem and Commissioner Tovey, correct? Okay, any discussion? All in favor of the motion, signal so by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, like sign? That motion carries unanimously. Consider appointment of, uh, reappointment of Jay Thomas Burnett as our city attorney, what is the pleasure of the board?
Motion.
Motion by Commissioner Bridges, any discussion? All in favor of the motion, signal so by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, like sign? That motion carries unanimously. And at this time, we will administer the oath of office, uh, to each of these three appointees, starting with the mayor pro tempore. And I believe I will be doing that, you are it?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Do you want to call your tribe up?
Yes. And my pastor.
History is made. Okay, I'm going to ask you to repeat after me. I,
I, Patricia T. Fields,
do solemnly affirm,
do solemnly affirm,
that I will support and maintain,
that I will support and maintain,
the Constitution and laws of the United States.
the Constitution and laws of the United States.
and the Constitution and laws of North Carolina.
the Constitution and laws of North Carolina.
not inconsistent therewith.
not inconsistent therewith.
and that I will faithfully discharge,
and that I will faithfully discharge,
the duties of my office,
the duties of my office,
as mayor pro tem for the city of Oxford, North Carolina.
as mayor pro tem for the city of Oxford, North Carolina.
so help me God.
so help me God.
Congratulations. Mayor pro tem.
Make it official.
So you want to put your name in?
Yes.
Okay.
Um, no, I think we're, but thank you. You could tell another story.
You think he has one?
He's so stoked.
You think he has one?
One or two.
We were coming back from Norfolk, we hitched it up on the bus, started telling jokes. Never repeated one the whole way back to Oxford.
Okay, Patricia wants to lay hand. Here we go, and now we are going to invite our reappointed clerk Cynthia Bowen.
Oh, right hand.
Left hand, no, left hand, raise your right.
There you go.
I,
I, Cynthia Bowen,
do solemnly affirm,
do solemnly affirm,
that I will support and maintain,
that I will support and maintain,
the Constitution and laws of the United States.
the Constitution and laws of the United States.
and the Constitution and laws of North Carolina.
and the Constitution and laws of North Carolina.
not inconsistent therewith.
not inconsistent therewith.
and that I will faithfully discharge,
and that I will faithfully discharge,
the duties of my office as city clerk,
the duties of my office as city clerk,
for the city of Oxford, North Carolina, so help me God.
for the city of Oxford, North Carolina, so help me God.
Congratulations. And with this, I would like to invite our city attorney, Jay Thomas Burnett, to come forward, as well as his wife, Judge Catherine Burnett. Would you like me to hold it, you want me to hold it for you? I,
I, Jay Thomas Burnett.
do solemnly affirm,
solemnly affirm,
that I will support and maintain the Constitution.
that I will support and maintain the Constitution.
and laws of the United States.
and laws of the United States.
and the Constitution and laws of North Carolina.
and the Constitution and laws of North Carolina.
not inconsistent therewith.
not inconsistent therewith.
and that I will faithfully discharge,
and I will faithfully discharge,
the duties of my office as city attorney,
the duties of my office as city attorney.
for the city of Oxford, North Carolina.
for the city of Oxford, North Carolina.
so help me God.
so help me God.
I,
I, Jay Thomas Burnett.
do solemnly affirm,
do solemnly affirm,
that I will truly and honestly,
that I will truly and honestly,
demean myself in the practice of an attorney.
demean myself in the practice of an attorney.
according to the best of my knowledge and ability.
according to the best of my knowledge and ability.
so help me God.
so help me God.
Congratulations. Thank you, and I'm Judge Bullock. Okay, with that, we move forward to item eight on our agenda, which is the appointment of board committees. Which is, uh, something that the position of mayor is in charge of. So we have seven committees, and each board member is assigned to be chair of a committee. And then there are two other members that sit on that committee with that chairperson. So for our budget and finance committee, and I believe that's, here we go. Our city clerk is here with cards that she will pass out to each of you, so you can have this, uh, to refer to when you need it. Budget and finance will be chaired by Commissioner Gilreath. And serving on the committee will be Commissioner Kahn and Commissioner Bridges. On the, uh, Planning, Business, and Community Development Committee, it will be chaired by Commissioner Tovey. And serving on that committee with him will be Commissioners Bridges and Lumpkins. Uh, and Cheryl Hart is the planning director, who will be serving as staff advisor. And I failed to mention that for budget and finance, Alan Thornton, our city manager, and Hock Ung, our finance officer, will be serving as staff advisors to that committee. In the Property, Buildings, and Real Estate Committee, Commissioner Lumpkins will serve as chair. And Commissioners Tovey and Gilreath will, uh, be assigned to that committee with him. And city manager Thornton is the staff advisor to that committee. On our Personnel Committee, Commissioner Mayor Pro Tem Fields will serve as the chair of that committee, and she will be joined by Commissioners Tovey and Commissioner Bullock. And Melissa Labarre, our HR director, will serve as staff advisor. On the Public Safety Committee, it will be chaired by Commissioner Quan Bridges. And serving alongside with him will be Mayor Pro Tem Fields and Commissioner Lumpkins. Our interim chief, Pat Ford, and our interim, and our fire chief, David Cottrell, will serve as staff advisors to that committee. On our Public Work... On our Public Works Water Infrastructure Committee, Commissioner Ron Bullock will serve as chair. And Commissioners Teresa Gilreath and Brian Khan will join him in that committee. Amy Ratliff, our city engineer, and Stephen Blasko, our public works director, will serve as staff advisors to that committee. On the Recreation, Parks and the Environment Committee, Commissioner Brian Khan will serve as chair. And Commissioners Ron Bullock and Mayor Pro Tem Fields will join him on that committee. And the staff advisor will be Tina Cheek, our recreation director. We have several outside boards and committees that also request part, participation from our Board of Commissioners or from the city of Oxford in general. The Carleak Regional Water System, which we are a 20% owner, Commissioner Ron Bullock has served ably as our representative to that board along with Alan Thornton, our city manager, and they will continue to do so. On the Greenway, Granville Greenways Advisory Council, Commissioner Gilreath will continue serving in that role. On the Masonic Home for Children Community Communications Committee, Mayor Pro Tem Patricia Fields will continue to serve in that role. As our Carleak Council of Governments representative, Commissioner Kwan Bridges will continue to serve in that role. And as our Downtown Oxford Economic Development Commission representative, Commissioner Brian Khan will take the place of Danny Curran, who so ably filled that role for many years, and he will be in that role. And then as our representative to the Granville County Chamber of Commerce, we have our city manager, Alan Thornton, who will serve in that role. So I thank each of you for the role that you will play on the, these committees, and your commitment to the outside committees as well. As you all know, they all are of tremendous value. And right now, with so much going on with respect to growth and so on in the city, we are especially pleased that Commissioner Bullock will continue to serve in a leadership role with the Carleak Regional Water System. And with that, we've come to the end of our formal part of the agenda. And with the exception of allowing for remarks from newly elected officials. So Commissioner Khan, would you like to start? Or would you like to prefer to leave it to a former commissioner to jump off?
I will, I will happily start.
Okay.
Just so we can keep the symmetry going.
There you go.
So first and foremost, I want to say thank you to all the citizens of Oxford who, who came out to vote in this last election. It was absolutely fantastic. We loved the participation. I loved the opportunity to get to know a lot of you and want to continue that relationship as we move through this term and on into the future. I want to thank my, my lovely wife and three adorable children we saw here this evening, who are hopefully home sleeping, for putting up with the, the complicated election cycle and all that, all that comes with campaigning. I would like to thank my father, who was over the moon excited for this opportunity. My father never served as a elected official, but he did serve for many, many years as a head of a union. And as, and, and public service in that capacity was a big part of who he was. And he unfortunately passed away a couple of weeks ago, but he was fully enthralled with, with everything that was happening here in Oxford, the election cycle. And I, he was, he was extremely proud of this moment. So I know he is with me this evening to, to enjoy it. I also want to make sure that I, I thank some great friends and neighbors. I'll start with Guillermo Nurse in the back. Fantastic neighbor, fantastic campaign buddy. A few other folks, Chad Stewart from other neighbors. And I cannot begin to thank Eddie McCoy enough. I believe Eddie's already left, but Eddie was a great resource in teaching me the history of Oxford, all of the various ins and outs, and introducing me to a lot of great folks in Oxford. And he is a wonderful individual. And thank you to all of the, all of my peers on this board for allowing me to pester you with questions and, and get to know each one of you. And I look forward to, to this term of service. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Commissioner. Commissioner Bridges.
Oh, so I believe this is around the fourth campaign that I've been involved in with the city of Oxford. And as Mr. Khan was mentioning, his dad. I, I was thinking back, the first time I was, you know, sworn in, my mom and dad were here. And I don't know, it was around 2003, 2004. And, you know, when I heard about your dad, I actually was think, started thinking about my dad and how much he meant to me and all the efforts that I've went forward in and how much I miss being able to go over to his house and have him grab me and, and congratulate me on another accomplishment. But, you know, I have fond memories. I want to thank the voters for the city of Oxford, who, you know, just have consistently supported me. You know, sometimes I know that some of us oftentimes say that, that being a city commissioner sometimes is a thankless job, because you put in a lot of hours, you go to a lot of meetings, and, and sometimes you, you get comments and criticisms that, that hit you pretty hard, especially when you know you're trying to do your very best to serve the community. But again, the reward is when the citizens come out and support you and say, we appreciate what you do for our community. That just means a lot to me. And I know those of us who were fortunate enough to win, we feel good about that, that people came out and supported us. And I don't take it for granted. You know, a lot of times people will say, well, I mean, you've run about four or five times, you know, why, you shouldn't worry about anything. But I went out there and did door to door. I was at the polls begging folks for their vote. And I appreciate the commissioners that are leaving this board, Mr. Curran and CJ Harris, for their work. And, and as the mayor mentioned earlier, you know, you, you miss those that you have worked with for a number of years. But I do invite and, and, and glad to see some new folks come to the board, you know, in Mr. Lumpkin and, and Mr. Khan. And I look forward to working with y'all, as well as the commissioners that are still on this board. And my wife was here earlier, and, you know, I just cannot say enough about her. You know, we've raised three children, three wonderful daughters, and we have three granddaughters now. And, and, and my wife, you know, she doesn't say much all the time, you know, with the hours that I'm gone, but I constantly tell her how much I appreciate the fact that she is supportive of, of the efforts that I have being on this board. And I'm looking forward to the future.
Thank you very much, Commissioner. Mayor Pro Tem.
I'm not going to get emotional. First, I thank God. Second, the citizens of Oxford. Third, my pastor, who made the phone call years ago and said, you want to work, you want to serve, go sign your name. I did that, and he's been with me every step of the way, encouraging me, motivating me. I want to thank my daughters, my three girls, who have put up with me. After the passing of my husband, my mother, and my father, I felt like I was lost, but they stepped in and fulfilled the role. I want to thank the board for accepting me. And I want to thank the board again for this awesome honor to be mayor pro tem, to be the first female pro tem in the city of Oxford. We're making history tonight. I look forward to working with our newly elected. I look forward to being the grandma of the board. Every, every organization needs wisdom. Even though it's dyed red, there's a lot of gray up here. Thank you, thank you, thank you for all your support to people like, it might get me tomorrow, but like Ms. Candy Rogers, who never says a lie, but when she says something, it's powerful, it's meaningful, and it's sincere. Thank you, thank you, thank you.
Thank you so much, Mayor Pro Tem. Mr. Lumpkins.
Yes, I'll, I'll keep it short and sweet. First, I'd, you know, I want to thank my family for all their support and my wife Mallory and for putting up with me and all the things I get into, so. I want to thank all the citizens, all the voters that came out and turned out. It was, it was really great to be able to, to be out there and to meet new people, talk to people, see what everybody's vision is for the city of Oxford in the future. And I want to thank the board and past members as well for being so welcoming and supportive and open to answering all questions that I have. So I really appreciate it. And I, I really do look forward to working with each and every one of y'all and, and all the staff as well. So thanks, thank you again.
Thank you so much. And I'm going to follow with a few remarks. And then after that, I want to offer, as we always do at the end of a board meeting, we offer every board member to make any comments on any topic that they would, would like. So those that have not spoken, I will open up the floor to them. Before I go to my prepared remarks, I again want to mention former Commissioner Bob Williford, who was really as good and kind as they come. Never, not once in the years I've served with him, do I remember a cross word or a tone of voice. Just such a good man. So please, keep him in your thoughts, keep his family, keep his beloved wife Arlene in your thoughts as they deal with this tremendous loss. And we will all say thanks to Bob for great service to the city of Oxford. It is such an incredible honor to be given the opportunity to continue to serve the residents and stakeholders of our beloved city. I do want to offer my congratulations to the reelection of our now mayor pro tem, Pat Fields, and reelection of Commissioner Kwan Bridges, and our newly elected Seth Lumpkins and Brian Khan, who are going to be serving alongside us. We are so proud and excited for all of them. On this board, we are the bearers of a sacred trust. Our residents, business owners, and other tax and fee payers commit funds to the running of our city and trust us to work with our manager and staff to assure that those funds are spent as wisely as possible and that our policies are sound, enabling Oxford to grow and thrive for the generations ahead. This is a really exciting time, as a new level of growth is upon us. I look forward to working with each of my colleagues to help Oxford be the community of choice for people with choices, such that our financial stability and historic friendly charm are cemented for the next generation. And we are able to offer, as our vision statement says, an extraordinary quality of life for all. I could think an endless list of deserving souls, but given the time, I'll limit it. I want to thank, as everybody has already done, the voters who made the time to exercise their democratic right. I want to thank my husband and family, especially my husband, who shows infinite tolerance and understanding of me. The Taylor sisters for their boundless energy and support. Judge Carolyn Thompson, who has sworn me in now seven times, every two years. I am so blessed. My parents, who have given me endless opportunity. My brother Charlie, who set the bar for political engagement. And lastly, Cindy Bowen and Alyssa Blair and anyone else who worked on preparing tonight's reception, managing every detail of the agenda, and did a smashing job with the Christmas parade and our candy supply. So give them a round of applause. And with that, I would like to ask Commissioner Gilreath, do you have anything on your mind that you would like to bring up?
Well, wasn't prepared to have anything on my mind. I'm just mad. I just want to say congratulations to all the newly elected commissioners now and the reelection of, of, of Kwan and Mayor Jackie and Mayor Pro Tem now, Pat.
Pat.
And so I, 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 I look forward to working with each and every one of you. And I'm excited about the, the growth and where Oxford is going. So it is nice to have new vision, new thoughts, new, new just comrades to, to help move us forward. And so I'm looking forward to all that Oxford has to, to offer all of us. And I look forward to just working with you. So congratulations again, and glad to be part of this process.
Thank you so much, Commissioner. Commissioner Tovey.
I'd like to reiterate what Teresa said. Congratulations to the two new commissioners. Congratulations for those reelected and to Pat, historical moment for Pat. And I'm glad that we do have a vision for this town. And we're going to be moving forward with that vision. And one of the things was the roundabout, right, Mr. Thornton? And the Christmas tree. I mean, that's the first for Oxford. So it's, it's, we're moving forward, and I'm glad to see it with the new commissioners. I look forward to working with them immensely, so.
Thank you so much, Commissioner. Commissioner Bullock.
I too offer my congratulations both to the new commissioners and those reelected. We've got a challenge in front of us, as has been shown in previous meetings with the requests, as well as development programs that are actually going on. We're going to, we're going to see some growth. And it's going to call for all of us to work together, to express our opinions and to be honest, and work as one board to try to keep the momentum going in a positive direction. Whatever I can do to help anyone, especially the new ones, please let me know. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Commissioner. I have a non-congratulatory comment to make, because I always have a comment. But, Mr. Manager, is there anything that you would like to bring up tonight?
Just a couple of things real quick. Thanks to all and congratulations for reelect, being reelected and being elected to serve. And I pledge to you as your manager to continue to work tirelessly with each and every one of you and all of you collectively in order to continue to see Oxford grow and thrive into the future. As far as remarks this evening, I just want to plant a seed, and that is, it's nearly the holidays, and the new year will be upon us very, very soon. Typically around that time, as my staff knows, they get their present, which is a budget, a budget preparation packet and instructions for the new fiscal year. And we start to talk about consideration of a board retreat. And, well, I want to plant that seed tonight, because I'm already thinking about it, and where we want to go and what we wish to do. And of course, I'm sure the overarching theme of the board retreat will be, you know, growth and development in Oxford and strategic vision into how we deal with all of that. So I will be sending you some information regarding the retreat. I just wanted to plant a seed. Typically, we hold it in February, and you'll be getting some more information from my office about that. So. So start thinking in those terms of how we want to conduct it and its content, and potentially even who facilitates it this year. So look for that information. As far as the reminders, I do want to say that the reminders on your agenda, some of them have the wrong dates, so I'll take a look at that. The city of Oxford is going to be observing the 23rd, 24th, and 27th of December for the Christmas holiday.
Twenty-third, twenty-fourth, and twenty-seventh?
That is correct. It will also be observing the 3rd of January for the New Year's holiday. And the board's agenda meeting will be January the 4th, not the 3rd, so.
The 2nd, yeah. Okay, perfect. So January 12th, the RSVP for the Granville County Chamber of Commerce. That's correct.
Far as I know, that one's correct.
Okay.
One out of four of them.
You're in good company, given the number of times that I miss things, so don't worry. Excellent. Is that it for you, Mr. Thornton? Mr. Burnett, is there anything that you would like to add?
First of all, I would like to congratulate the newly elected members of the board and the board members that will be elected. I appreciate the confidence that the city has instilled in me over the years. And I was just thinking about, I've been doing, I've been the city attorney for over 25 years. I'm not the oldest rat in the barn, but I've been in the barn longest. And I appreciate y'all letting me continue to serve.
Well, thank you very much, Mr. Burnett. We appreciate your service. Thank you so much. And with that, I have one thought that I just wanted to bring up because I really don't want it to, to wait till January, when the weather will be even colder. And that is, every year when the weather gets cold, I worry about our homeless population since, you know, once upon a time, when we did dispatching out of the police department for ourselves, the lobby was open because there were dispatchers in the office 24/7. And so if people needed to get in out of the cold, they had that option of going into a warm building and maybe lying down on the little love seat there or something. There was, there was a place for people to go. And so I, I am asking our manager and our staff, I bring it up periodically with our fire chief and our police chief, are there any thoughts about what we can do or be thinking about? We've been fortunate that the weather, for the most part, has been balmy, but I dare say that even at balmy, we would all be chilly if we tried to sleep outside tonight. Any thoughts about how we can provide for the people that don't have a place to go on our coldest nights? And I open that up to the manager, our fire chief, or our police chief.
I don't know that I have any currently, but I will have a conversation with the county about that very subject and see how we can coordinate any activities with the county of Granville to assist those folks that find themselves in unfortunate circumstances.
Thank you. I appreciate that. Excellent. Okay, anything else? Nope. Okay, well, thank you very much. If we can just be thinking about the ways that we can support these folks in an affordable manner, I think that would be a wonderful thing. And with that, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
A motion to adjourn?
Motion by Commissioner Gilreath. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, like sign? Vote with your feet. Thank you. Merry Christmas and Happy New Year, one and all. Thank you for coming out.
Thank you, guys. Thank you, y'all. I see you got a follow-up before I get to it. Huh? That's all right.
I got you.
Need to have now. Try it. Try it. Try it. Anybody got 20 on?